Hi. Why is this not fucking working? Um, hello? Anybody can hear me? Hello? Um, there's no sound. We can't hear a thing that's going on in there. Steve, the sound is not on, on the meeting. I cannot hear anything that's going on. It's not being recorded with sound. Just wanted to let you know. Just wanted to let you know. Can anyone hear me? Hello? Can anyone hear me? There is no sound.
The motion is.
No, no, please, please don't.
I.
Five eyes, one abstaining for.
Couple, three more days.
New people are sugar.
Open any public comment? Now open the time. Correspondence, very correspondence.
Um, it's all out here on tables.
We got it.
We have population, second population certification. We have uh um the chambers, grant application information is on the table. Um as well as the. Apple information that let it go set the chocolates if you guys would like to pass those around. This part um.
Those were chocolates that are city engineer um supervisor.
I did not push this to the agenda under a particular item, could we put that here under the grants?
For the.
Main Street.
It being the grant opportunity. So we're at grant opportunities and updates, would you like to?
Yeah, we had a meeting, it's uh Kaylin and Kiana. And um Pat and Joy about the. Program that we already passed in within few and while Kiana was planning it up to. Build that information out for us and send it over so that we could um give support to the program. It um sounds like a really good opportunity to engage the businesses with um. Not a lot of requirement on our end other than information and support. For the businesses and the $200,000 grant opportunity. Thirty percent of some type of either in kind donation or um. Help me out, in kind donation or.
Uh or complimentary grants. If you have complimentary grants or anything like that. You want me to?
Go ahead, yes.
Uh so the Main Street uh organization has funding for helping rural businesses. Uh make improvements to their properties and. Other efforts to help employment and for the community, the business typically Main Street where your businesses are. The frontier chamber of commerce that you belong to does all the heavy lifting on the grants process. Um occasionally they may ask the city, i.e. the city council. For a letter of support, say if a business, let's say Gabe is applying for funds to renew facade on his building. Uh Main Street may ask um for the uh the city to submit a letter of support saying, yeah, please think this is a great idea. But the heavy lifting on the grant writing and everything is handled by the chamber.
And where is this audit?
Uh this is the Main Street Fund, the Main Street. That I can't remember the specific.
It all goes through the chamber.
There weren't eight ones that were having that black winters.
Yes.
The very back of the packet.
So the grant process is just now opening up, there's a pre-selection process uh started today. And then uh that that pre-selection process closes on January 6th. And then it moves sort of up the chain.
Any questions? Basically all that. Is this only for people on Main Street or?
No, actually, this is what the city considers its business district, which extends from um essentially. Where the old highway joins. Twenty six. Along the highway to basically the Dollaride Barn and then the Main Street area.
Basically, city, city limits.
Yeah.
District, yeah, that that allows um the businesses on the highway.
Like Dan's included.
Three.
So people who run businesses out of their homes can't, can't get any grant money for.
Um. Hmm, no, because it it would need to be part of the commercial downtown district. I think commercial zoning is probably the. The stipulation on that.
It's a lot to do with the revitalization of.
Yeah. Yeah, essentially, it's it's funded out of the Oregon, uh I wouldn't say it's the historical. State historic preservation office, so it's kind of more of those historic buildings and whatnot.
So what they're looking for is a motion to support what is um submitted.
Counselor, vote it back.
I will second.
Counselor, make motion to support the business organ, say by counsel of the bank.
Business organ.
Business organ.
Main Street.
Main Street program. Open for discussion. No discussion, counsel of Ferguson.
Are there going to be certain people that are going to be designated either through city council or through the mayor to be on a project list or?
Send us into there. And so I can answer that, they, there is, there will be um selection committees and boards and. That that encompass these projects in several communities. And so the frontier regional chamber of commerce is looking for people who are interested to sit on those boards and councils and. And sort of help jury the process and uh provide any other assistance, so they are looking for people to sit on those.
Um they don't require.
It's not required.
It's not, no.
But it'd be nice.
Yeah.
I think didn't Kaylin say that they're never turning down any?
Yeah, they're not turning down.
They won't turn down anybody.
Yeah.
And and another question, is it just for Mitchell or is it also like spray and fossil or?
Yeah, it's it's the tri-county area and and but this what we're, the support that they're asking for here is just for projects that are. They're not asking you to weigh in on anything spray or rupus or cotton.
But unless you're on the.
Unless you're on that committee.
You've heard discussion. Counselor Kirk. Anthony is uh. I'm gonna stand. The Ray Barai.
I.
Ten person, hi.
It's ready, I.
Counsel votes five eyes, one abstain to um. Move forward with their. Down. Program. Revitalization. Anything further for grants, for updates?
No, there are none.
Moving forward, resolution funding the results of the November eighth, twenty twenty two general election. This is a requirement by the state. That the council approves. Results, even though they have been certified. There is copies of the results of them. If you're. Counselor, vote it back.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the resolution at twenty.
I'd like to make the motion to accept the resolution of twenty twenty-one, pardon me, twenty twenty-two, I twenty. One twenty-two, the resolution for claiming result, the number second elect.
Yeah. I'll sign that motion, made by Councilor Robert Ban, second by Councilor Ferguson to. Prove resolution twenty twenty-two dash one. Need a second, open for discussion.
Just a quick question, this is all, this ought to be done a bit here, correct?
Well. And to my knowledge, I'm not sure if you did it. Yeah, we haven't done the thing. Uh, something else, it's just been kind of. So, any further discussion on that? Counsel, right away, great.
Sure. He's right, I. I think I.
Anthony, read by. The river I.
I.
That's pretty smart. Counsel, watching, and this to resolution twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-two. Mary Bird, do you know right up in the woods? Is I, can't approach him where he's.
Yes, it's also in my report. It will. Elections, um, the two counselors that received the fewest votes. Will be, um. Billy and. Happy.
So in two years, the two seats will be open for, we get on a three-year cycle or four-year cycle, so. I know there's a cycle, there's someone. Or, right, because, uh, we all know the procedure of why people had to, you know, they go things like that, but we're supposed to be on a four-year cycle. You know, two year. Every two years we did change. Moving forward, resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve. Resilient adopting a public records management policy. I'm prepared to do that, or is it?
Yeah. Um. I would like to make a motion to adopt a public record management policy. You know, not if I go to. I'd like to make a motion to just. Uh, you know, to approve a public. Record management house. The resolution have to be before that? Is we, is that the twenty-two dash twelve?
Yeah. It has to be on a resolution. Otherwise, it's not. Your option for resolving the.
Well, a resolution. I don't know. Definitely, listen up. No, you're usually less prominent.
We're not doing open.
Okay.
Counsel Ferguson, I know. I don't think the. They're not to me. Trying to make a motion without stating the resolution.
Oh, I, I wrote a generous motion, certainly. Did you make a motion? I made a motion to. Make it a policy, by the way, instead of one to the. I don't have to make it. I'm not going to adopt that as a policy. He said, he said a little problem for this guy. I, I, I'm just trying to be clear, did you make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve? No, I did not make a motion. Okay. Thank you. I'll just ask any questions about it. Definitely.
Counsel Ferguson. I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve, resolution adopting record management policy. Counsel, Robert Ban.
Sounds like the second step, please.
Which made by Counsel Ferguson, second by Counsel Robert Ban to approve resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve. That we have a property or a record management policy. Which I believe is in the.
If you do not have a policy, you cannot charge for it, so when somebody says I want all of your records for the last ten years, you just have. You don't.
Which we are doing. Motion made by.
I'm sorry, and also you should have some sort of. Policy so that you know what you're doing and not doing. And with the computer being so full of stuff in two thousand nine, you need a. Destruction policy, you need. You need to start somewhere. And this was passed, this is old business from summer.
So Counsel Ferguson made a motion, Counsel Robert Ban. Make the second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two guess, well. Open for discussion. I'm.
Where are these policies going to be recorded? It is, are they going to, no.
It's like.
Everybody will, will have a copy in their book. Everybody is supposed to bring their books tonight so that I can update. However, why were you?
So they will, they will be adopted in your books. That's, there is. Any further discussion? Counsel Ferguson must. And first, nice.
He's right, I. I number nine.
Anthony. Larry Wright.
I.
And you counsel, counsel approved of resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve. That we do have a record. Resolution, next business, resolution twenty. Twenty-two dash one twenty-one, resolution adopting public records and rest policy. And I believe that's one that allows you to, allows the city to charge for. Public records request.
So you, so you have a management and then you have the policy in which somebody can request those things that you're managing.
At the things that are stated.
At the things that are stated, and these are, um, across the board, generally what people are charging, however. Um, the, this next legislation, there may be a change in how you can charge. I'm on the record management, uh, committee for OMR and so we're saying that our. Um, you're to the ground and it's. Let us like.
Counsel. I would like to look into past resolution twenty twenty-two that one twenty-one. Motion made by Counsel River. Counsel Robert Ban.
A second fact, please.
Second by Counsel Robert Ban, open for discussion. And if you don't know, public records stand quite lengthy, they can, like, they can go back seventy years, which you need to. So much, so much money, so it was great. Because unfortunately, you're not getting public records requests. So the offset. Men's that are, would be due to for. upside. Crazy.
I didn't notice that there was, uh. A charge for things that were online. I mean, I, I mean, like Zoom meetings and. And what, that's what it. I, I mean, I didn't see that in there. It may have been there, I read through that real quickly, so maybe it was in there. Jack didn't mention on there, but I was.
Generally, the things that, that are very quick, a lot of clerks aren't, they don't charge for, it's like our service to the public, and so. Really, if it's a Zoom meeting, it really is just simply just emailing somebody over something and it really isn't that big of a deal now. If they're asking me to go search for a particular thing in a meeting, then we might have to, you know, look at something else, but that hasn't. Happened, and so what I would do in that case, I would say, okay, here's about the amount of time it will take. At our current rate, it will take me this amount of time and this is your charter, do you still want to, okay, go for us. Great, thank you.
May a bit of discussion. Um, am I still be, am I still needed here? I don't think so. My sled calling my name. You're facing a ball.
I can have the holiday.
Hey, uh, I guess I moved to. To. Counselor Reeves, would you like to stress out the vote?
Here, happy birthday.
The river I.
How do you?
That person, I.
Free to rally, I. Captain.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash one twenty-one is last passed by council, thank you, council. Um, now we are to discussion and recommendation, uh, for overage of coronavirus stimulus. Funds. Now.
Um, I was hoping, I added it to the packet, the uses, but, um, if you would like to refer this to a work session. That would be great.
So basically, we wound up getting.
It's in my report, it's, I believe it's four thousand. Uh, three hundred. Four thousand six hundred and thirty-one.
I believe in the packet, it kind of gives you a guideline of what you can use for, um, basically the same thing that we got the main for last time, that's. Um. Pencers, all that other stuff, didn't that, that's the same.
It's, that's, that was a different pool of money, this is, the money that we got this time was budgeted to go into the water front. And so that was eight thousand eight hundred dollar eight oh six, I believe. Um. So we're over by four thousand, and if you would like to refer it to a work session.
For that, true, I'm one second. Thank you. Um, I've allotted, uh, council comment time. And I got an open public comment in case there's a downside that would like to talk about something, it was on the. What we can discuss. Counsel.
Can we get to the last? Point on the agenda?
Oh, we need that motion to move it through. I guess so, we're all on the same page.
I would like to make the recommendation for it to go to a work study or to a work session. So that we could. Discuss that a little further.
Counsel Ferguson.
I, Counsel Ferguson, second motion.
Which made by Counsel Robert Ban, second by Counsel Ferguson. To move coronavirus stimulus funds discussion to a day work session.
Could I possibly even? Point that out a little further to our work session in January, so that we can start the. New year on running.
Sound later, thank you.
Is that okay for you, man, then, um? Excuse her.
Open for discussion. No discussion, Counsel Robert Ban, you want to start something, please.
Have you?
River I.
It's right.
Yeah, very soon, I, also, good, good, our coronavirus fund. Uh, discussion to our. Um, work session in January, thank you, counsel, now we're to the council comments, if anybody would like to comment. We have two minutes, that we were mine. Counselor, right.
Yes, I would, um. Appreciate it if, if they look at or do cabinet executive statute. Under O R S nine oh eight. I want to do. Either tonight after here or.
Yeah, I did know.
We can't have tonight, too, it wasn't posted. I didn't, that's why I said no for clarification.
Thank you. Oh, in the next moment. Boy, I, please. Then the second.
I don't.
Something he just handed out to us here, yeah, that's not for everybody or. I had some aid. That's the word. If they got me banned, you.
Good to everyone.
Could you explain the purpose of this?
Okay, I'm glad. We need to address the time that. Office was closed for two months, it's a file. And around here, we need to get started in the city. Citizens need some. Vote.
It's done. The office is up there.
No, we're talking about.
Okay, but, but I. Again, the office is spoiled for a medical purpose, you want to try and do medical purpose?
I should.
We're not asking. We need this per comment, you know, we're running.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'll re.
This is for comment only.
Well, we're on here, what I gave you.
For what purpose, I don't understand the purpose of your executive session.
I think we have problems with. Okay, we like to address that. You know, because we have so many people come to us, citizens saying, what are you going to do with? And you know what we need to address?
And you're concerned about.
Come on, come on, come on. Don't stop. Don't stop.
Figure out what it is.
We take that piece. You can have one.
Yep, we can.
Good answer, that, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to make this really clear that everybody really understands what you're about, what I'm going to do, and has to open up some. You know. Okay. Do you have any? It was a neat time. To open up some medical issues on, on, the end to work. You're getting a whole other world that I'm preparing it all. That it is not a good thing to do. So, okay. Because I want to go all the way, as a supervisor right here, make noting, I don't want to go all the way to any legal bounds to protect the city.
We know that.
Now. And check the mountain, has the floor, I'll go all the way to protect the supervisor, you heard y'all. Just make note, because we're, we're going, we're open, you're all getting into her medical edition. And anybody, so.
We didn't mention medical. Two minutes. Excuse me, meeting adjourned.
Oh, no, 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 this is. Your time. Time you gave us.
Fighting by the rule.
So. We didn't. But you need to. I just. Sure. Where it does, you may not. Have a complaint against a staff member, you cannot do that in an immediate, we didn't make the rule. We did not make that rule.
We didn't. For discipline.
You're open.
Point. Point. Counsel Riley was asking. For executive session, change of job performance of the course. Which.